One, the magic hour. And I think we've got all the folks that are gonna be here, here. So why don't we get started? We'll call the April 25th, 2018 Town Board Work Session to order. Let the minutes reflect that we have all but one board member. Mr. Quinn is out on business and will not be here tonight. We have a number of members of staff and some distinguished audience. Includes that young man right there, part of the distinguished audience. So we'll hit a couple of items and then we'll get on to our agenda. We have the minutes of April 11th, 2018 before us. And want to entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'm moved. A second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion on those minutes? Seeing no discussion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries and the minutes are approved. We have, our monthly reports are up to date. We have no public hearings this evening. We have no guests tonight. We do have folks in the audience that may join us on a couple of these items. But let's start with our action items. And we'll start with DPW pole barn, Mr. Eric Tate.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Tate.
Thank you. So as you'll see, there's a packet in front of you. We did get some grant money for a pole barn to go on our existing facility over at 1607 Jackson Road. With trying to figure out where the best location for it may be. We know there's the red barn out front, but it's not in the best shape. It's certainly kind of seen its age. We tried to figure out where it may fit with that. Kind of the condition of the existing barn. We tried to see how a new pole barn may fit in that spot. So the first sheet you'll see is an area of the existing conditions. Kind of showing where, you know, how some of the parking lays out. The second page shows kind of a black and white, just to help clear everything up of the existing conditions. And then the third page is kind of what we're talking about for a proposed layout to show how it may fit. And we can not only actually remove some pavement and turn it back to kind of green, you know, previous area. Help with the stormwater side of it. But also, you know, rather than having to, you know, really do anything additional pavement-wise, it would already kind of work out. It'd be a nice repurposing of the area as well as the utilities are already there to have the electric ran to it.
The purpose of the pole barn will be for...
To get all of our vehicles, as you can see kind of on that first page. There's some that are parked, you know, outside on the very left of the page. You can see somewhat make out, a lot of the vehicles are being left out in the weather.
And you see it on the weekends, driving by.
Yeah, the weekends, you see them parked out front. There's even more parked out back, you know, behind the gates, you know, year-round. Between the rain, sun, you know, salt, it's wearing on them. So it'd help kind of promote the life, being able to keep them inside.
And the funding for this came through a state grant?
Yes, through Senator Funky.
Okay.
Does it cover it? Does it cover it? How much more you need?
Right now, I'm looking to kind of advertise for bids. So, you know, we'd have to do a bid opening to see exactly what they come in. That money was based on a pole barn a few years ago. So there may be a slight increase as, you know, from when the time we started the paperwork to kind of what the actual construction cost may be now. But it shouldn't be too far off.
So the grant secured by Senator Funky was an amount of $129,000?
Correct. So it's a sizable chunk and should cover most if not all.
And so Tony, today you're looking for a green light from us for Eric to keep proceeding ahead?
It's, yes. Easy answer is yes. As Eric, as Eric and his team were taking a look at the best location for this so that we did not either under utilize or set ourselves up for any circulation problems. Took a look at a number of the sites, number of the locations on the site. And thought, based on the condition of this building, that building is the current red barn that has been there for many, many years. We've kind of patched up a little bit to make it safe. Demoling that and replacing it with this barn would take care of all of that. And keep it in an area where we could clean up the front entrance, lessen the pavement, clean up the curb appeal on the front and have a 60-by-100 usable pole barn for DPW general. Unheated, so it's cold storage.
Cold storage.
So it don't have lights.
It's got lights.
And then so on, on the north and south end would be overhead doors. And so that you could pull in one end, out the other.
Yeah, I'm supportive of this. I think we should proceed ahead. I think it's sorely needed. Certainly appreciate Senator Funky's grant. Certainly, Tony, you should, or you should take some credit for proposing the state grant to him for his securing the appropriate funding. And let's just, let's move ahead and get it done.
I'll make a motion that we permit Eric to pursue the bid process so that we can take full advantage of that grant.
Okay. Okay, so been moved and seconded. And then what we'd look to do is we'd look at our next Town Board meeting next Wednesday. We'd have a resolution in advertising for bids with a bid opening in middle May and award hopefully by June 1st or the first weekend, first weekend, June. We have, just for the record, all the paperwork between Eric and Barbara, all the paperwork has been submitted to the state and accepted for us to move forward. Right now, surely where is the location that the board would like to see it is all that we have to provide back to the state.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Mr. Tate. Thank you. Move on to our second item, Avenue Place subdivision, Section 6, Mr. Costello. And Rob, if you'd like, you're welcome to come to the table. I think at the public hearing, you had no voice.
No.
You probably can't use that as an excuse tonight?
No.
Okay.
How's everyone tonight?
Very good. All right, so Mr. Costello, if you'd lead the board in any updates or changes that happened since the public hearing that we had on March 7th?
Thank you, Tony. We did have our public hearing. We held it off for a while. Rob's brother, Rudy, was taking care of some health business. And so I asked my Rob to appear tonight because he hasn't finalized that yet, I guess. So the actual subdivision proposal, this is the last phase of the Avenue Place subdivision. It's a 14-lot subdivision in Phase 6. Everything else is either in the process of being built out or has been. In addition to the 14 lots in Phase 6, there is a pond, which actually has been constructed now for quite a while.
Yes.
The pond will have to, you know, be looked at by town staff to ensure that it's still functioning and hasn't silted it in certain locations. We'll work with them to do that. The other issue at hand was the fact that if you go back to Phase 2 or 3, at the bottom of the plan, there is a stub road that's proposed to go southward into the property to the immediate south owned by Vendo. That has not been installed to date. We have indicated, PRC's indicated that we're supportive of having that done prior to Phase 6 being completed and they have agreed to do that. We don't want to leave that stub there, you know, and then have somebody else have to come in and do it later on. The only other issue at hand, I mean, those issues are all kind of worked out already with town staff. The only outstanding issue is that Rudy and Rob indicated both prior to and at the public hearing that they would like to screen approximately 6,000 to 8,000 cubic yards of soil. It's extra soil that's left from the site. And the intent is to screen it onsite and then sell it from the property. I know that the neighbors in the past, particularly to the north, have been concerned about screening and noise and hours of operation.
Time of year.
Time of year. So if the board's inclined to allow that to occur, the recommendation would be to set controls in terms of hours, days, even the amount of time it's gonna take to, and hopefully encourage them to get it done quickly and off-site quickly if you're gonna do it. It is in a remote location on the property. You can see the orange exed out areas are houses that are under construction now in that phase. Everything else, the green area is the pile itself. And then the blue is the, is the area that the screening will occur. So I know that they have talked to Bill Vendo about it. He hasn't expressed any concern to me as to where it is, just that they take good care of the area and not make it a, you know, a dust bowl bed there. I have not talked to the others around. But again, it was addressed at the public hearing. So we can certainly talk to the immediate neighbors if that's an issue.
So if I recall correctly at the public hearing, the way you were gonna do it, you were gonna leave, you were gonna pull from the backside, from the south side?
Correct.
If I remember correctly, leave the north side of that, which acted as somewhat of a buffer for that load and then take it out and exit out up on 250 Fairport Webster, Fairport Nine Mile Point Road through that area.
That's correct. Yeah, we're gonna try to leave a nice thick section in the front. And it has, I mean, when it's actually decent weather, it has a good 2, 3 feet of nice grass growth. And we're gonna try to leave that all intact. It helps erosion and it also will, you know, buffer the noise. But like Mr. Costello said, we're a decent amount away from anybody, you know, where they're living.
There's a hedge road to the south of the property too, isn't there, on the Vendo property?
Yeah, yeah.
There's a tree area?
Yes, it's pretty thick. And we haven't touched it and he hasn't touched anything on his side either. So it's decently thick right there.
So the board in the past has been sensitive to, you know, neighbor concerns and this issue. So what you've done in the past obviously is ensure that the contractor has water on site in the event that there's a need for dousing the area, keeping it dust-free. The hours of operation and certainly those we look at to make sure that they're not disrupting people at 7:00 AM in the morning, that type of thing. It's really no later than business hours and probably even at dinnertime or before that. You haven't let them do it on weekends. And then you try to get a timeframe in which they're going to lock it out.
So I think one of the earlier sections, so the gray shaded areas, Section 6 with the 14 lots are for consideration for this evening. I think to the north, there was a topsoil pile up there now probably coming up on about two years, round numbers, two years ago. I think, I think the board had done a good job working with staff and the applicant about putting some criteria for that. I think it talked about hours of operation. It hit a number of those things, Mr. Costello, that you had talked about having water on the site, hours, some hours of operation. I think notification of the neighbors and things like that. I think if we were to, and I would propose, that we pull that wording out. And as we look to draft a resolution for the board to review that we had, if we used a lot of that same criteria, I think that worked well for neighbors, it worked well for the town. I think it worked well for developer when we did that the last time.
And I will prepare that for you for review. And then incorporate that into the resolution. And then one of the conditions would be that they get their permit as part of the process of signing.
So I know, I know it, Rob, that it's somewhat dependent upon, you know, supply-demand type of thing. Based on, you know, the 6,000 to 8,000 cubic yards you have, you got any rough idea what you might be looking at for timeframe?
I'd like to think we'd have it cleaned up by September. I mean, the building business is booming and everybody's already crying for yards. And they're already asking, where's topsoil?
Got it.
So I think it's gonna go pretty fast.
Okay.
In my opinion, it's, I mean, and it's real nice stuff. And Billy Voice is always, you know, does a really good job and he has a good reputation.
Hey, Mr. Voice, who's what did the other pile for you?
Yeah, yeah. And then we also are planning to post, which we did in the past too, several signs throughout the neighborhood at, you know, trucks 5, 10 miles an hour max speed, even lower than what a speed limit would be just because, you know, we don't want, you know, sometimes you get a trucker, he gets a little fast. And if we find a guy like that, he's not allowed back in. Because they're our customers too. And we do a pretty good job of, if not daily, every other day getting the roads cleaned. And we have a pretty good reputation of keeping it clean and it only hurts us too.
We got brand-new roads, it's got stuff all over it.
Okay. Other questions or comments? So the topsoil was one issue. I think you were gonna leave a couple of thousand cubic yards for use.
On-site.
For a project overall.
Yeah.
But you did indicate at the public hearing that you were gonna be posting signs and doing and performing regular cleanup of that. Okay. Board, other questions, comments at this time? Mr. Costello, anything additional that we haven't talked about that we should add to the record as part of this discussion?
I think you've covered everything. And I want to incorporate all of those comments into the final resolution.
And then I'd ask the applicant, any questions of the board of anything that we discussed either at public hearing or here this evening?
No, I think we're good.
Okay.
And you guys, you know, we're more than happy to work with whatever requirements you guys think.
Okay, very good. If that's the case, would someone be...
I move that we Avenue Place subdivision for a resolution next week.
So Section 6, second?
I'll second.
Okay. Further discussions? Mr. Costello, you will get that prepared for the board?
I will.
For our May meeting. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Have a good evening.
Absolutely, you too. Our next item is a condition use permit at 1802 Penfield Road. This was for the, to allow a nail spot at 1802 Penfield Road. And Amy and her husband Anthony, welcome. And son?
Zachary.
Zachary, welcome. Very good. He's the sharpest dressed young man that we have here in the audience and at the table, so.
He's very interested in politics, so he wanted to see the process.
Oh, same. Well, welcome. So Zachary, please come right to the table.
We're turning out to the desk.
Please come right to the table and join in.
He got accepted at McQuade today, so we're celebrating for dinner.
So congratulations. What grade are you heading into?
10.
Very good, congratulations. I have a granddaughter that got accepted at Mercy and she's looking forward to start, starting there in September. So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You will be a great role model for McQuade.
Thank you.
All right, very good. So we held a public hearing on the 21st of March on this application. And a lot of input was provided by the applicant as it related to number of stations, number of chairs, customer service, making sure that employees didn't have their cell phones on, employees in uniforms, making sure that they're really paying attention to customer service, which is a big focus. I think square footage is approximately 1,100 plus 500 as part of that. I think, I recall 600 clients for skincare. The parking's great. Hours of operation is predominantly, I think, Tuesday through Sunday, off on Monday, if I recall correctly. And then Amy would be doing some by appointment only work for, I'm not gonna have the right technology.
Skincare.
Right, skincare, thank you. You know, living with a lot of women in my house, I still haven't picked up on all that.
That's okay.
Talked about the signage being pretty much similar to what was there and within the boxes available. And that the Town Board would have an opportunity to review. I think indicated nine employees, some retail, I think Linda asked about retail. And of course, something new that I think we all learned, which was a venting that is a new requirement in New York State if you're doing nails and things like that. So with that, Mr. Costello?
You were pretty intent on that.
Yeah, so with that, Mr. Costello, anything new to add to the record?
Just, I was just talking to them earlier and I just wanted to clarify the time that they start in the morning because they were pretty good about the times they were gonna leave at night. But we clarified that 10:00 AM. I guess my question, are you leaving the existing site that you have now?
I am.
You are?
Yes, yes. And the Lombardos know.
And I was trying to find out how many years you'd been there. You said five the other night, I think. But I thought it was more than that.
No, it's five. We've just been in New York State for six.
Okay.
So it's only been five.
All right. I just want to make that as a reference.
No, that flew by, that's fine.
That's pretty much it. I have drafted a resolution for your review, which I will get out to you tomorrow. And I think it encompasses all the things that...
Well, I thought it was an excellent presentation. You're so comprehensive and everything.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
We don't always get that. So it was very clear, you were intense and...
Excellent, thank you.
The extra information.
Like son didn't think I did a very good job, by the way. He criticized me and told me I didn't know my stuff.
I do mock child model UN, so like I hear people talk all the time. So like I'm used to very fluent, like they don't stutter over their words. They're like consistently talking.
Don't you love this kid?
And who's paying for your high school? You better be careful.
I love them to death.
Our future is in good hands, obviously.
Yeah, it sounds like the future's in good hands.
Yes, absolutely.
Very good, very good.
Well, I support this. I certainly appreciate you keeping your business in Penfield.
Thank you.
I'm sure you had a lot of options to choose from, a lot of attractive communities. And I think staying in Penfield is, it's good for everybody. And so I personally appreciate you, you know, you staying in this neighborhood, staying in the community.
If you want any other way, we love it. It's for us, so.
Excellent. Perfect world, remind us again when you would like to open?
I'm thinking in a perfect world, June 15th. I was, had a conversation today with landlord Louis. And he had some items that he was responsible for. And he asked me if I would kind of just serve as the subcontractor and just say, look, just let me know what it's gonna cost and do it. He was responsible for new tile floors, painting the walls, and taking down the temporary walls that the yoga studio had put in as a kind of like a barrier, an eight-foot barrier. So I told him I would do that. As well as the things that I need to do, like the venting and the plumbing and electrical. And that's, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna pursue that. I have pretty much made the decision on the contractor. I'm looking at one more person tomorrow and then I'll make my final decision. But yeah, I think we can get to work pretty quick, so.
I was pretty impressed. He actually came in for building permit applications the day after the public hearing. So that's a good sign.
Actually, I saw him at the building, at the building department doing that. And I understand that Zach has been willing to help do some demo work to help manage.
100%. Oh, yeah.
Whether he likes it or not.
It's a family, it's gonna be a family business. He's gonna, he's gonna do his part.
You're all good to go. All right, other questions or comments, board, on this particular application? Mr. Costello, anything additional that you'd like to add that has not been added to the record either at the public hearing or this evening?
The only thing is that Amy did submit a copy of the signed application, assigned proposal. I will send that out to you. I haven't had a chance to and I apologize, but it's a pretty plain, yeah, it's a standard sign.
It's in the box. It's the same, it's L's all the way across.
Yeah. I'll get that out to you ASAP.
Let's get you up and moving. Thanks. Very excited, we're ready.
Any, yep, I was just gonna ask, before we do that, Linda, if I may, just anything additional from the applicants? Any questions you might have for the board on this particular application?
No, I think I'm, I think we're in good shape. We're anxious to get started and...
All right, and I would give the floor to Linda.
Oh, I was just moving, well, the application is granted for conditional use permit for the nail salon and that we have the resolution prepared for next week.
I'll second.
Go ahead. It's been moved and seconded. I think we have hit everyone around the table for any additional comments, input. And seeing no further discussion on this matter. I would ask for a vote, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, matter carries. The resolution will be before the board for next Wednesday.
It will.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good, appreciate it. Zach, congratulations.
He loved the dinner to celebrate his acceptance in this. So appreciate everything.
Zach, you had two desserts tonight, okay?
I don't know if I can take all that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to our next item, which is building tenant proposal for 2146 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. Again, Mr. Costello. Dr. Falone has, is in the house and has joined us. And we'll give him a moment to look at his site plan.
So Dr. Falone was into the board last meeting. And we talked a little bit about the idea that he did receive, as you remember, he did receive preliminary overall approval for the three buildings. The one on the bottom is constructed, obviously, that is where Moe's and... Oh, thank you. And the AT&T and also now the future restaurant coming in. That'll be before you was made. The third building to the back is proposed to be an office building, which would be in compliance with code in terms of use. The building in front, which I believe is a 4,000-square-foot building?
Yeah, 4,500.
All right, that received preliminary approval. And Bob talked about the fact that he has two tenants. He has Metro Mattress?
Metro Mattress.
And then also Pizza Hut. And obviously, Metro Mattress is a pretty innocuous in terms of traffic generation, that type of thing. The board was a little concerned about the Pizza Hut. They did ask me to convey to Bob some of the things I'd like him to talk about. The Metro Mattress, number of employees and number of employees on the site at any given time. Potential number of customers that visit the site per day based on current volumes they experience and the hours of operation. With the Pizza Hut, the number of employees and number of employees on site at any given time. The seating proposed for the site and the hours of operation. And I will recall that the board is not excited about the idea of drive-through service at that site. So in addition to that, Bob did ask for Jim Crackman's number. He's trying to resolve the issue with the lighting situation out there that the contractor's disrupted when they were doing some underground utility work. He's been hooking up with Jim Crackman to get this resolved. So he has Jim's number and they'll be taking care of that soon. So with that, any comment? Can you just hand us something out? I'd like to get a copy of that, actually, if I can.
So just so that, at least I am, so I apologize. So the, the building that is closest to Route 250, the south, what I'll call the south building, that's the current building where Moe's and AT&T and then the Chen that is gonna, their operation, that they're gonna move in there. And so then the building to the north will be Metro Mattress and Pizza Hut?
Yes.
And that'll be the Metro Mattress that's coming from the northwest corner of 250 and 441 that's in the plaza by AAA?
Yes.
Okay. And then the building in the back, that's all gonna be Genesee Valley Physical Therapy?
Correct. And just to remind the public and the board, this is a discussion that I generated because I wanted the board to have a comfort level as to whether or not he should move forward with a proposal to the board for a permit. This is not a permit process right here.
Right, no, I understand. Thank you, Jim, for that. And then, and I heard, I think I heard that the Genesee Valley Physical Therapy, approximately 4,500 square feet?
4,000.
4,000 square feet.
Is Genesee Valley relocating from somewhere else or is it somewhere?
They're in, they're up the road.
They're in Penn, yeah, Penn Fair Office Building Park or something like that.
By Little Caesar's?
Is it moving?
It's further north, it's by Pembroke Drive.
Oh, okay, got it, okay. Because I thought, I thought that they were...
It's in the old Seeler, the office.
Yeah, Seeler's property.
Got it, okay.
Okay. And then, and then, so as I, as I take a look at this, Metro Mattress, 3 1/2 employees on site at any time, number of customers that visit per day based on their current volume is 8 to 10 customers per day. And then the hours of operation, 10:00 A.M. to 9:00 P.M., Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 A.M. through 7:00 P.M. on Sunday. And then on the Pizza Hut side, it's 8 slash 4, is it?
Well, they have eight employees, but only four...
Well, they have eight employees, but only four at any one time.
At any one time, okay.
And that's with the Metro Mattress, too. They have three employees for that site, and then maybe one to two will work at any one time.
Okay. And then their seating originally was at 36, now down to 20 to 25?
Correct.
So like five tables or five booths or?
I think they're doing booths.
And then, so the discussion around the drive-through or drive-through window? No, no drive-through? Or questions, comments?
I'd like to see what it looks like. We know what Metro Mattress. We were asking about Pizza Hut last time because there's that little mini Pizza Hut over in Baytown. Is it going to be something like that?
Well, I mean, the building's going to look just like the 6,000, the one to the south. So the decor of the outside, of the building, the outside is going to look identical, just smaller. Instead of three tenants, it'll be two.
But it's a Pizza Hut, I mean.
So the Pizza Hut will have their, kind of like what Moe's did with, on their site. They'll have their sign.
But the aesthetics of the building will be comparable to what is existing there right now?
Correct.
So it won't be a red roof or anything like that?
No, I don't, no, I don't, I don't believe it's that.
So your intent now for the board is to actually come in and ask for final approval for both the 4,000 and then the other building to the back?
Yeah.
Okay. So you'll have architectural drawings for the back building as well, if you come in?
So the, the front building, which is Metro Mattress, Pizza Hut, what's the square footage of that?
4,500.
That one's 45. And then the one in the back is, so.
Four.
Is four, so not, not, the drawing there is not necessarily to scale?
Right, that one that we did the preliminary was 5,000.
Okay.
So we're actually making it smaller.
Making it 1,000 square foot? Okay.
There's also concern about the signage, because you're so far out, would it, you know, could you get signage yet where Jeremiah's is and across from Target, the light, you know, to, to get people to come in, or is it?
Well, I think putting the building back there, too, is going to block the neighbor, or block any visibility from lights from the neighbors, too.
The signage issue is, is an interesting situation. This property is, is not part of the rest of the incentive zoning program that you did for the other properties. So there is that one freestanding directory sign as you come into the project over by Jeremiah's. I'm not certain at this point in time if there are enough panels left on that to identify these three uses. We'll have to look at that, and certainly before they come in, I will have information for you on that. If they can do that, it would be preferable. If they can't, it is a separate parcel, so they would be able to have their own directory signage on that property for the, for the two uses or the three uses.
I believe the signs on the building are going to be the first thing visually that people are going to see anyways.
Yeah, it's, it's the one in the back.
In the addition, it's just directionally out to get around.
That's right. I think.
This is total connectivity, right, all the way to Penfield Road now?
Yep.
Because this would.
This will, this will actually tie it into the trial property.
That's that last property, they'll link it all together.
Yeah, I have to put the piece of road behind car wash.
That was, if you remember, that was the incentive, that was part of the incentive to go off-site and do that for us.
No, that's something positive. It's a pretty long time. You know, I think, I think this is a pretty good use, you know, especially the fact that it's not going to be drive-through and all that. Yes, why, Pizza Hut's popular. And it's only a small, it's not a lot, lot of seating.
It's like a cat's ass.
Yeah, I mean, you'll get people.
It's like a bistro's. It's only 2,000 feet.
There will be delivery?
Yes.
Okay, so there'll be a specified location for their vehicle to park.
Like drive.
And not in the front saying Pizza Hut, Pizza Hut, Pizza Hut, which we're wrestling with a lot right now.
I do have a question on the, the road in between Cornerstone and the car wash.
Yes.
Is that a town road?
No, it's not a town road. It's privately owned. We do have a maintenance agreement with a portion of that road, not all of it, but a portion.
Because have you, have you seen it?
Yes, we know.
That was going to be my, so you're perfectly in for me, because I had mentioned to Mr. Costello last Thursday, as I looped around in the back there Thursday morning, a couple of things jumped out at me. Condition of the road is very, very bad. The dirt pile is still there, and there was a boatload of building debris that folks are dumping and what have you. And it's been, it's been a year or more since we talked about the dirt that was going to go more than a year ago, and, which is still there. So unless something happened between Friday and today, I'm guessing.
We have taken about half of it away.
Taken some of it away.
Yes.
And then that's been replaced with the building debris and things that folks have been so gracious to drop off, so they don't have to dump it someplace else.
It's a landscaper that is using trial's property. So I've talked to him. We put the sign up for a no dumping sign. I mean, this is on Jim's property.
Yep.
Not even his property, but Jim's in the hospital, so I told the guy that's kind of managing the property that I would take care of it. So we're going to take out the debris, and then the rest of the, the dirt is going to be transported away. So I mean, half of it's gone already.
So when's the other half going to be gone?
Within the next couple of weeks.
So if we, if we, if we held on this for a couple of weeks.
Well, when's the next, when would be the next meeting?
The next meeting would be the 10th?
Well, it doesn't work that way. If you're going to submit an application for final approval for those two buildings, you're going to have to get the plans prepared, down to the final details for engineering, which is going to take a while, because they're not at this point in time, if you're using the same engineer. I know he's, he didn't do all the work he had to. And then we have to advertise it, and we'll have to send it to the county, so it's going to be a minimum of 30 to 45 days if everything were done immediately.
So, so if we speak positively to this, it's not going to a resolution or anything. It's just going to.
No, right now.
Travel up on all these other issues he has to address.
Yeah, but even, even if it was a perfect situation right now, and you were totally all set with this, the soonest I could get a public hearing at this point in time if I were to submit something for next week would be like the first week in June.
June 6th.
And even that, I mean, it's, it's kind of tight, so.
Right.
I, I'm sure his engineer's not ready for that yet.
No.
So the issue of the dirt debris pile will be moved by then?
It should be.
It'll be gone?
It should be.
I thought it was going to be moved even long before.
Six months ago.
Yeah.
Well, the one thing I didn't want to do is take all the dirt away and then have to bring dirt back in. So we're trying to figure out how the site balances, because even on the, the property to the east, or to the west of the road, there's some dirt that has to come out of that, too.
The east, where the, where the Genesee Valley Physical Therapy?
No, where the Pizza Hut and the.
Oh, where the Pizza Hut and Metro Mattress.
Yeah, because the, the topography is just so off, because the car wash is sitting so high.
Okay.
All the property's kind of, you know, they grade to the east, except the car wash. The car wash is completely flat. Am I wrong saying that?
Oh, yeah, I understand.
Because we were even.
Yes, but the whole site.
I was out there with the engineer trying to shoot how, how we're going to put that road in, because the, the parking lot of the, of the car wash is so high, and the road is going to be low, so I don't know if we got to do like a retaining wall.
Yeah.
Well, can, can the, there's an easement in the area that you're showing right now.
Well, the easement, you can see the sewer easement. So the, the road is about 15 feet west of the, of that manhole cover.
Right. So what I was thinking is, if, if you're having grade problems and you have a relationship with Mr. Trout, where you could realign that road in another location, that would give you a better grade, that's something to look at as an option. But again, it's going to take some time for you to do that, and certainly your engineers are going to have to spend some time figuring this out. So this is not going to happen in the immediate area.
The road, no. It'll be a while.
Well, the road, I mean, part of the subdivision, or part of the development process, it'll have to be built, which is something that he's doing. The question's going to be the engineering and how you get to where you need to be for the final product. But I mean, you should be starting on that, starting to think about that.
So, so tonight, you know, what's before the board is, you know, the discussion of moving forward with what's being proposed, the two buildings, Metro Mattress and Pizza Hut, and then Genesee Valley Physical Therapy to the back. And conceptually, if we're, if we're good with that, then Dr. Foulone needs to then take the next step to work with his engineer to ready plans for submission, and then to make a formal public hearing.
I move to accept the proposal as discussed today, and have it go through the, continue through the process. Second.
Before you vote, can we just have a quick discussion on that? You know, and, and I understand a situation where 2146 of the house wasn't all that business, and he does have a change in grade there, just because it was different when they built. And I don't expect him to have to take all that dirt off that site at this point in time if he's going to regrade everything else in the future. But there is a lot of junk and debris on that site that should be cleaned up, and that should be taken offsite as well.
Yeah, and certainly putting up some no dumping signs. I know you can't sit there 24 by 7, you know, until you get in and actually start working on the proposal and completing it, you always run the risk of Mother's Little Helpers dropping off some building materials and some other junk, so that they don't have to pay to dispose of it. But any, you know, any signage that can be put up to help, you know, avoid that from happening, and, you know, maybe, I'm not a big advocate for putting up fencing, but, you know, maybe, maybe putting a chunk of fence across there, just again, to give them no place to dump. And I'm thinking more from yourself, because it sounds like you've taken the, the approach that if it's dumped, they're going to, you're going to take care of it.
I know.
I don't think you want to, I don't think you want to be doing that. I don't think you want to be doing that, you know, load after load after load, so. Okay. Anything else?
That covers it, I think.
All right. Dr. Flawney, anything that, any questions for the board or anything that we have not discussed that you'd like to have added to the record?
No, that's it.
Okay, so moved by Paul, seconded by Linda, to accept and to start to move forward with final plans and making an application to the board for these next two buildings. See no further discussion, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you, Dr. Foulone.
Thank you.
Good to, good to see it. Stay close to Mr. Costello as you're going through, as, as always. Okay. We'll move on to Hold Harmless Agreement. This is at 1525 Creek Street. Normally, Mr. Valentine would be here. Mr. Costello has taken his PE license and is continuing this evening. Mr. Costello, welcome, sir.
Hi.
Mr. Costello, you, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. LaFoud. I took a night at the Holiday Inn Express last night, and I'm now a professional engineer. We had a chance to meet Alexander Fassinella recently, and Al, I'm just going to give that to you. That's the easement.
Sure.
Alex and his wife recently purchased the property at 1525 Creek Street, which is on a south corner of Crestview Drive. And in doing that, I think you have a small child?
Yes.
So their concern is, and I'm, we just hopefully, we're going to see this. This is the property. Here's Crestview Drive. I gave you several pictures. You can see on the aerial, there's a sanitary sewer line that runs north to south, or south to north, actually. Anyway, it runs through the back of his yard. And in that yard.
Part of that time, we'll tell the difference between north and.
Well, it's, it's running north-south, so.
Okay, there you go.
Wooden grates, I don't know. But anyway, you'll also notice in his pictures that there is a hedgerow of trees along the right of way. And his intent is to install a fence to protect his children from the street. He is looking currently at a four-foot fence, and we've explained to him the setbacks and all that business off the right of way. He's wrestling right now with the idea of maybe applying to the zoning board of appeals for a variance, to see if he can get closer. His intent is not to go on the other side of the trees, but to stay within the tree line, and that's going to be between him and the zoning board of appeal. The reason he's here tonight is because there is a sanitary easement that runs through his backyard. There is currently two fences, one on his property and one on the other property, that run along the south property line, divide the two neighbors, over and at the existing easement. He would request, he's trying to clean that mess up, so he's requesting approval to keep that fence in place, subject to the Hold Harmless and License Agreement. He would also like to request that he be able to encroach into the easement area with the, the four-foot fence to continue it down to the existing fence, which is running along the back of his property line where you see the 100. You also see a white, I should give you a copy of this, actually, because we, good one for you.
Thank you.
There's a white blotch running through the middle of that area. There's a shed, I think, on the property, or you want a shed?
There was a shed.
There was.
The previous owners of the property removed it.
And you, would you like to do a new shed?
Yes.
All right, so the building department and the town engineering staff identified this white strip in here as being an area that complies with setbacks and is out of the easement area, so that's giving him direction as to where he can place the shed, if it's not going to be closer to the property and certainly outside the easement area. So in essence, he's really requesting from you, depending upon where he is with the zoning board of appeals, in either respect, he has to get relief from you to allow that four-foot fence to approach into that 20-foot easement area. And I think we have identified the easement, or the sewer. I believe, according to the engineering staff, the sewer is nine feet deep at that location. So it's not going to be an issue or a problem.
This is consistent with requests we've had in the past, and just certainly just, obviously the owner's aware of the potential, the town needs to get in there, and your letters thoroughly as to your intent, and.
He's kind of inherited some problems he's trying to create, clean up with us. So I suspect we'll probably have to talk to his next-door neighbor about asking for a license and Hold Harmless Agreement with that fence as well, so.
Have you spoken to your neighbor at all? Is he aware that you're looking to put a fence up?
Yes, I have. He doesn't seem to have any problems with, I'm going to ask a question of which neighbor. I've told both of them.
To the south.
To the south. So Mark, I have spoken to Mark. He didn't really seem to care that I was putting a fence up.
Okay.
He was like, okay, you know, doesn't bother me.
He was like, okay, you know, doesn't bother me, so I said, all right.
And he's at, he's at 1529?
Yes, yes.
He's one of 1529's.
Yep, and I've also spoke to Bob, he's at 16 Crestview, and he didn't seem to mind either.
Okay. And the reason why I asked that question is because in these situations with fences and sheds and other things, you know, working with your neighbor ahead of time can save a lot of potential time and problems down the road, bringing them, you know, up to speed and in the loop with what you may be thinking of doing, getting some of their input can save a lot of potential headaches down the road, 'cause we, you know, from time to time, we get contacted from neighbors who are unhappy about other neighbors and what they're doing, and it's...
Well, I think it's their property, their property line is skewed.
Right. So, so I, I would encourage you, you know, as you continue to move forward through the process, to just, you know, make sure that they know what's going on, so there's no surprises and Jim Costello's phone doesn't ring at some point saying, I didn't know that, that you were doing this, 'cause it, it does happen, so.
And you can certainly tell your neighbors you've come here and that, you know, we've reviewed what you're looking to do, and I would move that we grant permission for the... Are we doing a hold harmless agreement to be signed?
And that is just, you know, we don't know exactly where that's gonna be yet until he decides what he's gonna do with the zoning board.
Sure.
And that's gonna, and we'll certainly, we'll certainly...
Or, or the theory we're...
Yeah, exactly, we'll make, make sure the zoning board knows that you're supportive of the encroachment wherever it may be, depending upon what they determine to be...
That'd be helpful, 'cause to eliminate the loops that he's got.
We also know exactly where the sanitary line is, because we know where the manholes are in alignment with the other, so that's a good thing, I haven't picked the problem of placement.
And, and we're comfortable that, that line from manhole to manhole is the way it should be?
Unless somebody does that.
Eric's gotta go down and check.
It could be.
Similar, similar rule we had behind Baytown, right, Mr. Tate?
I'm, I'm comfortable with this, I think I'm actually, may have been the first one to talk to him about it, as we were looking at a kind of a settlement area in the front yard, and wanted to make sure it wasn't a sewer issue.
Got it.
You know, based on that, we kinda came to find out, the sewer actually ran through the backyard and, you know, talking through that and his desire for the fence to kind of, to just come here, so.
Okay.
You know, based on the fact that it's, the sewer was put in as part of the Creek Street improvement, and it was kind of as new as it is, and the depth, you know, don't, don't see it being any issue, and things should be fine.
That's the focus.
So.
Did you move from within Penfield to here, or moved into Penfield?
I, I moved from the city of Rochester.
Right, yeah, welcome, you're welcome.
Thank you, haven't been here very long.
All right, so Paula has moved that we support this hold harmless agreement, is there a second? Seconded, any further discussion from the board? Mr. Costello, anything additional you'd like to see added to the record?
No, I think we'll work with him to get that document in place, put a resolution in for you to be authorized to sign the agreement.
Okay.
And I think we spent enough time with him where he understands what his responsibilities are on the agreement.
And then from the property owner, any questions that you might have for the board?
Um, not really, I had just, just chat with Jim at some point.
Okay.
He's a DPW guy, so he appreciates sanitary sewers and tack.
Right, well, yeah, for a whole bunch of reasons, especially when it's running through his property, that continues to flow away.
I appreciate, I'm not even a DPW.
That's right.
But I'm a mom.
That's right.
Okay, so move and seconded, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much, continue to stay connected with Mr. Costello and Eric, if you're looking for an engineer, talk to Eric. Not necessarily Mr. Costello, he can help you through the administrative piece, but he's, he's still working on his engineering license.
I know which way things fall.
So, all right, thank you very much, and welcome to Penfield. Uh, there being no further business to come before the board this evening, the April 25, 2018 more session stands adjourned at 7:52 PM.